Good evening, and thank you for watching our Board of Select meeting. It is March 30th, if you can believe that, and it is 7:00 PM exactly. We are going to dial in for the conference call, and that number, should you want to dial in, is 774-233-7100. And the ID number is 582079. All right, so I will dial it in now. Okay, folks, we're going to start off with the update from our emergency director, Michael Cassidy.
Good evening, thank you for having me. Things have changed a little bit since our last meeting, my last update a week ago, last Monday evening. Our number of positive cases in the community was at one. Since then, we've had a couple additional positive test results come back for individuals, so our total number of individuals from Holliston who have been diagnosed with a positive COVID test is seven. Of those, one has already recovered and has been released from quarantine. A second is expected to be released from quarantine as soon as tomorrow, and a third is in the hospital where they have been for over 30 days. So in the community, currently, we have five, expected to be four as of, hopefully, tomorrow if our nursing consultant clears that second individual. So these numbers are not unexpected. Based on the additional testing that's taking place, this is consistent with what we're seeing throughout the county, and the Department of Public Health has really encouraged local communities to focus not just on their individual results in their individual community, but to look sort of at the county experience completely. As of yesterday, in Middlesex County, there were 980 positive COVID cases in Middlesex out of 4,955. So Middlesex continues to be the largest epicenter of positive test results for COVID in the Commonwealth.
Do they have any idea why?
We're the largest county.
Those being the largest county, yeah.
So it's a, yeah, I looked at Dukes and Nantucket, and I think they were at eight. It's a good time to be a small county, just from a statistical standpoint. Based on the predictive analytics, they are suggesting that the peak will not occur here in the Commonwealth until somewhere between April 7th and 17th. Depending on which modeling you're looking at, that could be April 12th, that could be April 14th, it could be April 16th, but they're expecting the peak not to occur in the Commonwealth until between the 7th and the 17th of April. And some models suggest that new cases won't taper off until June 1st. Again, that's very early, and that is also very dependent on people paying attention to the social distancing recommendation, because the more that people go out and interact with other people, the greater chance for disease transmission. So this is, again, an opportunity for us to encourage people, please, please, please pay attention to the social distancing recommendations. This is not an extended vacation. This is really for the health of your neighbors that we are looking for compliance. I've had some inquiries from several folks in town with regards to how to enforce that social distancing, because some of them were finding it a little bit challenging with some of their congregate housing, so I've provided some additional flyers that hopefully will provide more authority than just a memo from the management company of that housing establishment. We continue to keep the parks and the playgrounds closed. Unfortunately, some people are not heeding the barriers or the signs that have been placed up. Some chains and locks have had to be replaced. Some barriers keep getting moved, and we keep having to put those back into position. So although the supermajority of people in town are complying with the stay-at-home advisory, there are still some people that have not heeded the request and the warnings and have tried to avail themselves of our recreation facilities. In terms of our PPE supplies, we've gotten some donations. We have finally received our first delivery from the regional cash. We're waiting on deliveries from several vendors. We had some challenges with the debit card this past week making purchases, but we were able to work through that. We've got good lines of communication with our Board of Health. The Health Director, the Police Chief, and I met on Friday just to make sure that all of our lines of communication are open. When they receive a positive test result from the Maven system, he is sharing that with us so that we can add that at the public safety answering points, so that should any of our first responders need to respond to those locations, they are aware that someone in that residence has a positive COVID test. We don't know who, we don't know male, female, age, we don't know any specifics, other than someone has a positive test result from that location. And when that individual comes off quarantine, we update the public safety answering points so that they know that is no longer as much of a concern. They keep it in the system for a couple more days, just out of an abundance of caution, but they keep a very close track of the current cases versus the ones that have rolled off and out of quarantine. In terms of public safety responses, we did have three separate incidents last week, which required us to temporarily sideline some of our public safety personnel out of concern that they may have had an exposure. As we continued to do additional investigation and were able to speak to public health professionals as well as doctors involved, we were able to determine that none of those three incidents were actually an exposure, and therefore, we were able to very quickly get our public safety personnel back into operation without needing them to be quarantined for two weeks nor requiring them to have any testing. We have modified our response protocols on both the police and fire department sides to minimize our risk of exposures. For a lot of patients, we're now encouraging them to meet us outdoors, in the driveway or on the front steps, rather than having our responders go into their homes or businesses. We are minimizing the exposure of our drivers to the patients. We've got the compartment closed between the patient compartment and the cab, and if there is any index of suspicion for someone possibly having the coronavirus, then we are doing a very deep clean with the ambulance when we get back, which makes what normally would be an hour ambulance call into about a two-hour call. By the time they get back, they do the decontamination and cleaning and are able to put the equipment back in service. And then one other note, because of my staffing model, we do have two of my members who have been either deployed with the military or put on standby for deployment, and so my ranks are being reduced slightly due to their commitments to the military.
Is this the National Guard?
I have one who's in the Coast Guard Reserve and one who's in the Army Reserve. And the only other update that I would give you is that, to date, we've spent about $2,500 obtaining personal protective equipment, a little under $600 for technology on the town side. The schools have spent a little over $20,000 on technology to assist with their enhanced learning opportunities, and to date, they've spent about $17,000 on food service costs related to assisting with making sure that those who are food insecure do have healthy meals during this public health crisis.
It adds up.
Very quickly.
We have our Health Director here, too. Would you like to say anything to the folks back home?
No, other than wash and social distance. Again, we're answering our phones as best as we can, emails. Feel free to email, and we'll give you answers as we can.
Okay, great, thanks. Any questions?
So from enforcement, like, the police and fire, to a certain extent, enforcing the social distancing and the parks closures and so on, how is the town of Holliston doing?
We're doing much better this week than we were a week ago. The prior weekend, the police spent a lot of their officer-directed patrol time swinging by recreation areas and having to remind people using either the public address system or face-to-face conversations. During this past week and this past weekend, the experience was definitely many fewer incidents like that, so I think people are, for the most part, compliant.
And you mentioned it before, but so of our first responders, we do not have anybody who's tested positive, and we do not have anybody who's quarantined because of an exposure?
We not only don't have anyone who's tested positive, we haven't even had anyone who's been symptomatic and required testing.
Okay, great, you.
John, any questions, sir?
Chief on the PPE mentioned that you had received some donations, and you've been able to purchase some. Is your consumption of PPE and the amount you're able to restore keeping up? Are you falling behind? Where do we stand overall with PPE?
My supply chain having opened up, we are ahead. Early on, a week ago, we were still trying to catch up, but currently, we have a good backup inventory, and if we start to use a lot more in the next couple of weeks as we approach that peak that's predicted to be coming, based on what I have and what is shipping right now, we should be able to keep up and still stay ahead of it.
That was all I have.
Excellent. Anyone on the conference call like to ask a question to the chief? Nope, I guess not. Thank you, sir, for the update.
Absolutely.
Much appreciated. And Tina, do we have any warrants to?
We do. Tonight's warrant is for $134,839.69.
Please have a second. All those in favor? I oppose, motion carries. Thank you. Public comment, Tina?
Well, I just wanted to say that, you know, over the past week or so, we've seen the kindness of Holliston residents really go above and beyond. Later tonight, we'll be accepting a donation from a resident, Mr. Chris Keenan, for the Holliston Police Department, and I'd like to call out special thanks to Keith Boudet, Susan Falasky at the schools, and Mike Fico, Anthony's on the Green, for providing meals to the school lunch program. You know, these folks are having a real difference, a real impact on our community, and I wanted to thank them tonight. Also wanted to say yet again that donations are still being accepted and will continue to be accepted at the Holliston Community Action Fund. Financial assistance is being provided through this fund for utility bills, medical bills, car repairs, and the like. If you'd like to donate, it's hollistuncommunityaction.org. If you need financial assistance, you can reach out to Youth and Family Services, and they will accept your request, your application for review.
I heard Pepper and Chaney's of Milford was helpful, too, and they used to own the Corner Market here in Holliston, and they've been very generous to our town.
I imagine we'll have lots of thanks coming forward over the coming weeks as more kindness, acts of kindness become aware to us.
John?
Just a similar debt of gratitude to all the first responders, ambulance, firefighters, police officers that are, and nurses and medical professionals that are putting forth an incredible effort during this unheard-of public health crisis. They're all heroes, and they deserve our full admiration for the work that they do. So thank you for all you do, and good work. Ways to go here.
And I'd like to thank residents themselves who have been, several of them have been making meals and leaving them on their front porch for people to pick up. There's been a lot of kindness and caring in the community, and it really makes Holliston shine as a community, as a very special place to live, with the caring nature and the volunteering and community spirit is second to none in Holliston, so thank you, residents. Report of our Town Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quickly here, I have a message from our Department of Public Works, and Sean Reese communicated with me last week that regarding the Cedar Street Water Main Replacement Project.
Yes.
He says here that the Water Main Replacement Project will proceed as scheduled. The Water Main Replacement Project at Cedar Street, Cheryl Lane, and portions of Turner Road is scheduled to start on or about April 14th. A detailed notice will be delivered to each resident impacted by the construction along with continual status reports throughout the project. Questions can be directed to Sean Reese, Director of Public Works, at 508-429-0603. So some things are continuing along as planned.
Excellent.
Last Friday, we had a really good conversation with our new facilities manager. We had a conference call with him on Friday morning at 8:00 AM with James Keest and Chris Mayo and Chris Canny and myself, and we're going to have another one next Friday. I think we're making really good progress. I'm impressed with his ability to get his feet on the ground and get his take-on projects that are, have been long delayed.
Great.
So.
And to prioritize them, you know?
Yep, yep.
Which is important, too.
Yep. Yep. Just as a reminder, the Finance Committee is scheduled to meet tomorrow evening at 7:00 o'clock here in this room. I think they'll probably do it remotely like they did last week. There'll be a financial team meeting tomorrow evening at 5:30. And there was a question that came up from a resident about opening up Marshall Street, our recycling center, and wanted to know if we would be able to open the recycling center on Saturdays while protecting employees and residents. I've consulted with the Emergency Management Director, and it's our considered opinion that no, not at this time, because we don't want people, for the protection of their own, you know, the public health and also the protection of the employees' health, we don't want to have people congregating in one area, even though they may not be, they may be more than six feet from each other, but the tendency is to.
There's quite a few of them at once.
Yes, yep. Town hall remains closed to the public, and staff is generally working from home.
But anyone can leave you a message?
On the, on our webpage?
Yeah.
Or on the voicemail?
Right.
Yep, we're actually answering the phones, at least from the selectmen's office remotely. So if the phone rings and it's a selectman's number, it rings at Donna's house or at Andrea's house, and they can answer it accordingly.
Okay.
Okay. And the virus basically is consuming all of my time.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Couple follow-ups.
Yes, sir.
Jeff, confirming that tomorrow evening, the Select Board budget will be heard by the Finance Committee.
I sent that message to Ken. I believe he confirmed that it was.
And at some point this evening, I'd like to discuss the DPW articles that are in play at this point and should be approved by this board for presentation to the Finance Committee tomorrow evening. I presume we'll do that under Board Business of Security.
Sure.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes.
Jeff, can we schedule to hear, along the lines of business continues, can we schedule to hear an update from the Sustainability Coordinator in the next week or so, if possible? I believe you'll have an update on our new community aggregation plan as well as work, update on his work to bring textile recycling and composting to Holliston.
Sure, not a problem.
Any questions from the conference call for our Town Administrator? Okay, very good, then. We will go on to annual town meeting, and it is recommended to us by our Town Administrator, Mr. Ritter, that we move our dates for both our town election and our town meeting. And he's got a suggestion here to do so, and I will ask the.
You may want to ask if Jay is on the phone?
Jay is on the phone. Okay, great.
And maybe Liz Greendale?
Liz Greendale, are you on the phone? No, okay.
I'm here.
Oh, she is here.
I'm here.
Great. We'd recognize that voice anywhere, Liz. So Mr. Ritter has suggested that we change the town meeting date to Monday, June 15th, with the election date following Tuesday, June 23rd. Does that sound good to both of you?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine with me. I'm available on the 15th.
Perfect. All right, then we will ask our.
Yeah, I've got it here.
Select Board Clerk to read the motions.
Before we get that far, can we just kind of kick around some theories and ideas about this, because I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Jay, question, so Chapter 45, the Acts of 2020, has not been signed yet. Is that correct?
Chapter 45, the one regarding the elections, is law.
It is law, okay. Which one is sitting on the Governor's desk?
The one on the Governor's desk, well, it's technically on the Senate's desk right now, is the one that would allow for a town meeting to move beyond June 30th, and would also have a bunch of other corresponding provisions regarding budgetary matters as well as permitting matters in terms of deadlines. That's the one that is still out there in the ether.
Okay. And under the proposed motion to move the annual town meeting, that's using existing general law, Chapter 39, Section 9, correct?
Correct.
If the Board were to take action on either item this evening, and events unfolded that we felt that we needed further time, the only relief we could receive would be through this bill that is currently with the Senate. Is that correct?
So let's talk about the two different proceedings. So for town meeting, you would be able to move, if the bill passes, beyond, you could take another vote, or the moderator could take a vote under his statute to move up until June 30th. So if you needed an extra two weeks or three weeks or, you know, anything before June 30th, that could be done by a simple vote. But if you wanted to go beyond that under the new bill, again, it would be a simple vote of the selectmen once that happened, so that's the town meeting part. The election part is a little trickier, but not difficult. We don't have authority, and I don't believe there will be authority, to move the elections beyond the fiscal year, but you can move them, and if this date, if the date you choose is inconvenient, you can juggle them a little bit. Now, we may get relief to go beyond the June 30th date, so it's possible that we'd be able to do that, but it's a little bit more fixed because there's a lot more to do, especially for Liz and her office. So there's notice periods that are involved and other things, but we also expect that if things continue to stay under a declaration of emergency, there'll be additional relief packages regarding these dates.
If I may?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that I would like to encourage all voters to do, regardless of what day we do choose to do the election, is to early vote by mail, which would limit the amount of people actually coming in to vote. That would be an option.
What I'll add to Liz's point on that is if you vote by mail and the date of the election is moved, you don't have to vote again, because the, under the Special Act, the same ballots will be used. You can reuse the same ballot, so those votes would count still.
Perfect. I just have a couple of housekeeping questions. We're keeping the deadline for those who are running for election the same. Is that correct, Liz? That did not change?
Yes, cannot change.
Okay, so the deadline to apply, to run for office, is the same. And then elected officials who were sworn in, whose terms are expiring with this election or, you know, either running again or will be replaced, this does not affect their term? They continue to serve until the results of the new election are posted? So Mark is with us until the bitter end here in June?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
That's correct, and that's existing law, too.
You don't get off till May 19.
What's that, Jay?
That's existing law as well, but it is underscored in the Special Act, in that chapter that was referenced previously. But yeah, that is the case.
Okay, and then.
Mark, you'll get an extra month of your time.
You and a couple other people, I'm sure. And then the decision to do June 15th, Jay, could you just talk through why that makes sense to you? Why June 15th is a good date, given what we heard from our emergency director and where the current law and proposed laws put us? Why June 15th? Why is that an appropriate date for us to consider?
Well, again, if you want to, if the new statute comes in and you want to push beyond June 30th, and there will be some provisions for that, you can do that. You could also do that next week if you wanted as well and change the date again.
Okay.
The only reason I chose June 15th is it was a date after June 1st, which a lot of towns are going, and I'm available. So selfishly, I like to attend your town meeting, so I wanted to be there.
We selfishly want you to attend, too, so.
Yeah, so it allows me to be there. I, as you can imagine, every town is moving into June now, so our dance card is filling up pretty quickly, mine in particular, so I have June 15th, 16th, 17th already on my card, so I wanted to make sure I could still attend yours, so I flagged that one as a possible.
As this pandemic plays out, we will have the opportunity, if we needed to, to change that date or to become.
Absolutely, you or the moderator.
Right, okay.
And if budgetary matters were a real concern, and this statute, if Special Act does pass, you could even go into the next fiscal year, and there's some emergency budgetary provisions that would allow you to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Follow-up question, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Jay, it's John Cronin. Good evening. Pursuant to Chapter 45, the Acts of 2020, is the authority to postpone the town election date solely with the Select Board? I ask that because I note currently, under Chapter 39, the moderator has authority, and I wanted to find out if the Special Act took any consideration of that authority.
So those are two different things. So on the election, that the Special Act that you mentioned applies to the election, and the moderator has no role in changing that. That would, that's the Select Board's responsibility. Town meeting is different. Town meeting, either the selectman or the moderator can change it. The moderator is more limited in when he can change it and for how long he could change it. He can only change it in the event of a safety or health emergency, and he can only move it for 30 days. He could move it for a second 30 days, too, and keep moving it out 30 days, 30 days, until the emergency is lifted, but that's, it's just a separate track.
Okay. So in short, the town moderator does not need to be consulted on this, on either of these decisions?
He does not. I mean, it's always good to speak to Bill, and I think Jeff kept him in the loop based on some emails we got over the weekend, so I think Bill is comfortable with, I think, some of the dates that Jeff floated, which I had earlier floated, so, but he technically doesn't have to be consulted on either.
Okay.
One more question for Liz, if John's done.
One more question for you, Liz?
Okay.
The election right now is scheduled for Tuesday, the 19th of May?
Believe so, if I look at my calendar, but yes.
And then when we, if we approve this motion, it would be, the town meeting would be still at 7:00 PM at Holliston High School?
The town election is currently the 19th of May, yes.
Yep, okay.
And town meeting always starts at 7:30?
7:30?
And that, yeah, so that would be what, on the 15th? Is that what you're asking?
Correct. It would be at Holliston High School as well, where it currently is, just.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Okay, thank you.
And you know, Jay, have you heard anything about lifting the quorum, if that be the case?
That is not part of the new statute.
Okay.
I'm a little disappointed in that. The House bill, now, may get added back in the Senate. We hear that there were some amendments today in the Senate, but what Liz is referring to is an early draft of this bill that's now in the House regarding town meetings. It contained a suggestion by the Governor, who had spoken to some others, about the ability to waive or reduce the quorum by a vote of the Select Board for a town meeting, anticipating that some people will be concerned about attending even in June. That did not make it to the House. There was some pushback by others. I'm not exactly in, I'm part of the moderator list serve, because I'm the moderator of my town meeting, and I was surprised to see so much pushback by some of them. I also preside over a town meeting that doesn't have a quorum, so I haven't seen any fall-off in attendance because of it, but I'm hoping it's back in there, just because I think from a practical perspective, it's going to be hard to rally people in June, but it's not there yet.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's a serious issue, actually. If you stare back at June, would it be June 23rd? Is that the day we said for the election?
Yeah.
If things are open and social distancing are, social distancing rules are eliminated or diminished, people are going to flee the town. They'll, you know, Holliston typically, after school ends, it's going to be a tough time to try and get a quorum, and 100 is already a hard time, you know, in April and October.
Oh.
So, I, you know, I put that out there as a concern. So, I--
We'll have to work on that and ask residents to attend.
It's going to be an issue, yeah.
Ready for a motion?
I am ready for two motions.
Okay, so the first motion is in regards to the town election. Pursuant to Chapter 45 of the Acts of 2020, an act granting authority to postpone 2020 municipal election in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and increase voting options in response to the declaration of emergency to respond to COVID-19. The board votes to postpone the town election currently scheduled for Tuesday, May 19th, 2020, to be held on Tuesday, June 23rd, 2020.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, and the second motion.
Thank you for checking the dates, John. You'll do the same on this one as well. Motion pursuant to general law, Chapter 39, Section 9, due to the governor's declaration of emergency to respond to COVID-19, the board votes to postpone the annual town meeting from Monday, May 4th, 2020, at 7:30 PM, to Monday, June 15th, at 7:30 PM, to be held at Holliston High School.
Do we have a second?
Second with a comment.
Go ahead, sir.
I just want to let you know, I spoke to the chairman of the Finance Committee this past week about a number of things. Hopefully, in a minute, we can talk about some spending issues. This extension also has the built-in benefit to allow the Finance Committee more time to work on potential revenue impacts for the FY21 budget. As we sit here today, we're working under some models that were put together before the virus, upend of the economy. Mr. Shader, and I'm sure the rest of his committee would have welcomed the extra time that we're allowing them to be prepared for the FY21 budget cycle. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. I'm sure it will help them. All righty, so that takes care of those two things, and I want to thank our town clerk, Liz Greendale, and our town council, Jay Talerman--
Thank you.
--for joining us.
Thanks, and if there's anything else, I'm going to sign off now, but if you need me for anything else tonight, then just shoot me a text, or Jeff can shoot me a text, and I'll jump back on the call.
Thank you, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.
All right, take care.
Thank you, Liz.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, we've got some board business to take care of here. We've got the annual town meeting warrant discussion of articles. Mr. Ritter has sent us some recommendations that we have a hard copy of. And so, we'll open this up for discussion, Tina.
Do we have Mary or Sharon joining us tonight?
No.
Okay. We have a packet of information from Mary and Sharon, or I think it's Mary here with, are we going to get into a discussion on what she's forwarded, emailed out?
The revenue reductions discussion?
Yeah, she sent along a couple of different pieces of information. I'm not sure where to jump in, so.
Well, I mean, where the board left it last week was that, you know, I presented the draft warrant, and I think Mark had asked me to come back with some recommendations on some potential reductions in spending.
Off of the article, okay.
From the articles.
Right.
We're not talking about the budget, we're just talking about articles right now.
Okay.
And you should have a list of the ones that you recommended to remove.
So, I--
But again, I mean, since you just voted to postpone or delay town meeting--
Yeah, I think that's where I want to start.
You know, it might be a little bit premature to have this conversation, because we have no idea where the revenue pictures are going. We have no idea. So, you know, it's a shot in the dark.
Right.
But it helps you prioritize your spending.
Right.
Given the decision we just made, we do not close this warrant and prepare it for public consumption until June 1st. Is that correct, two weeks before town meeting?
Correct, approximately two weeks before town meeting. Two weeks before town meeting, you have to sign the warrant.
Okay. It was April 13th.
Correct.
So, we now have quite a bit more time.
Time goes by.
Right. Okay.
It also gives some more time to people who are trying to get some numbers together, like Nine Green Street Committee was trying to get some costs together, so maybe some good will come out of this, you know. John?
Yeah, a couple of things. Notwithstanding the now postponed town meeting until June, there was some information that was generated by accounting staff. Sharon provided us a list of balances for departmental discretionary balances that are unencumbered, primarily from a supplies perspective.
Yes.
This list of town departments does not include schools, but I want to pass along that I understand the Finance Committee took a vote last week to recommend both the school and the select board consider a spending freeze for discretionary funds, given the uncertain nature of revenues, both local and state, and the impacts it may have on FY20 and 21. The list that Sharon gave us this morning totaled $62,600. I feel compelled to offer a motion, Mr. Chairman, if I could, to have our board initiate a spending freeze for such discretionary supplies until such time as we deem that freeze is no longer needed. Like any action, I think we need to have an off-ramp. If a department comes forward and says they need certain supplies, they can appeal to us under this freeze.
Sure.
But I think it's a limited step that we can take. As Ms. Heim pointed out, we are seeing some signs, and this is what I've been asking for for the last couple of weeks, and I'm glad to see it develop. We're seeing some signs of diminished revenue activity locally. Paraphrasing very quickly, Mr. Chairman, she reports that the parks are very concerned, because their spring programs have been canceled, but they still must maintain the fields, and they expect that cost to be between $35,000 and $50,000. And in addition, I believe we also had some other information relative to other-- excuse me, one second. Here it is. Nope, I got it. While we did receive our local aid payment yesterday, I believe, it's a signal that the state is fulfilling their obligation. One can never rule out the state invoking any 9C authority by the governor to restrict such flow. We have three months to go in the fiscal year. We're hoping that the local aid payments that we receive will be fulfilled, but we're mindful of the economy and the impact it may have on the state. We're seeing some diminished activity at the library. They're reporting a huge drop off, since the Minuteman Network is in charging late fees. Fire is predicting a 15% drop off on inspections. We already mentioned the parks. These are symptoms that we thought would emerge, given the circumstances.
They are already.
I feel it's important that we take a step of trying to control what little limited spending I think would be appropriate at this time to hold off any unnecessary spending until we see a clearer picture. So, I'd like to make a motion.
Can I jump in with some comments before you make your motion?
Sure. Why not? He's the chairman. There you go.
So, a couple of questions, first, or comments. You feel strongly about a motion as opposed to guidance, and by guidance, I mean requesting of our departments sort of a proposal or suggestions for amendments to their budgets before we make a motion to require a freeze?
Could you restate the question?
You feel, so I wonder about the, an alternate, which is to offer a guidance to our departments to request them, within the wheat, to propose budget cuts that they could see making in their discretionary, nonessential spending, as opposed to making a motion to freeze budgets tonight. I'd put it out there to hear comments.
Well, these dollars that I reflected earlier, remarked earlier, $62,600, these are, these are supplies. We're not, we're trying to control this non-discretionary spending. We don't need a plan of other spendings that they could, you know, offer reductions on at this time. That's an exercise. Frankly, it came out of a phone call a couple of weeks ago. One of the Finance Committee members started asking, I think he asked the schools, and then he asked a member of the Department of Public Works, what else can you offer up for cuts in FY21? Those exercises need to be a little bit more thought out for completion, equity, and scope. However, to your point, I think if we were to ask the departments to come up with spending initiatives, or cuts, or something like that, it's more of a beholden exercise. At this point, I want to just put out there, we're not going to allow non-discretionary spending this week. Next week, it may be something a little bit more elaborate or exotic as things unfold, but this is usually the first signal that things are not going to go your way, and we're going to stop the non-discretionary spending, followed perhaps by additional steps like you're recommending.
I just wonder if the departments would, from this motion, have enough information in order to look and say, this really is what non-- where are they getting that guidance from? Where are they getting, what in their budget is essential versus nonessential? Who are they turning to to get? For example, chemicals for the water treatment plant. That seems essential, but is that--
But the motion would include the off-ramp for them to come in and say, "We understand your spending freeze, but here's why we need these things."
Okay, okay. I would just add one thing, that on March 24th, there was an interview or a conference call with the Baker Administration, and they've made a commitment for the April local aid payments. That came through the MMA, so I think that's promising, but it's certainly not, you know, an answer to the long-term problem that we're facing. But March came in, and then April is said to be coming as well, so.
Yeah, I had a brief conversation with the state rep last week about, you know, trying to look at those same kind of tea leaves, and unfortunately, nobody really has the answers, and that's what leads me to think we should pump the brake a little bit on the spending. But a couple of things, Tina, to your point. April aid might be, you know, guaranteed, air quote, but the federal stimulus bill is expansive, and its impact on states is still sort of being vetted. I mean, we fully expect that that amount of money is going to have a major impact on citizens and governments, and their ability to pay bills and keep things going. It may be enough also to fend off any 9C cuts from FY20. It remains to be seen.
Right, sure.
And that's what I meant, well, these things are emerging every week as sort of new chapters in a book. Chief Cassidy made that remark earlier, that everything's changing so quickly. I think we need to have the flexibility to adjust.
Every week.
This week, it's a spending freeze on non-discretionary supplies. Next week, it could be, we need to go through an exercise. That's very comprehensive, you know.
Well, and I like the off-ramp too, that you gave, that if they did need something, they can come and ask something. So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second with the comment that we'll revisit it next week.
Sure.
Okay. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Ritter, this is relative to the list that Ms. Emmerich gave us this morning. I believe you have it. So, if you could prepare a message to the departments reflecting the vote and these balances, that's what's in play.
And Jeff, it'll be on the agenda next week to revisit it, as Mrs. Heins has requested. Okay.
Do you still want to go through the articles that Jeff prepared, or would you like to move on?
I would suggest we could look at these, but I'm not sure that we have to take any action, given that, you know, we've got plenty of time still. Unless the two of you feel strongly about--
I'm happy to wait it out, and we've got some breathing room here.
Okay.
The, one thing I do want to follow up with you on, Jeff. I've mentioned it a few times, I spoke to Matt Zetic today. Make sure there's an article, to talk to Sharon about the proper method by which we can accept funds in FY21 to pay for the contract for his services.
Yep, I've got it at the top of the page here, in your documents. I did communicate with her. I have not heard back yet, and I saw how that would work.
All right, so we will wait on this list, Jeff? And we have an appointment of Elaine Doyle, registrar, term to expire on June 30th, 2023. Do we have a motion?
Motion to appoint Ms. Elaine Doyle, registrar.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Community Traffic Safety Projects Grant. The town received a $16,000 grant. That was prepared by the Police Department, and thank you very much, Chief Stone and your staff, for doing that. And we need a motion to accept the grant.
Motion to accept the Community Traffic Safety Project Grant program for $16,500.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And just, if I can--
Absolutely.
--make a comment on that. So, Jeff, you have on your article list here for town meeting, Article 31, which is the Traffic Advisory Committee enforcement equipment. This is good news, this grant. The bad news that's attached to it is that because of everything going at the state level with funding and so with the revenue concerns, this won't be, this grant period does not begin until October 1st. So, after talking to Chief Stone about this, what probably makes the most sense is to push this Article 31 off to the October, the fall town meeting. It'll line up nicely with when the money becomes available to begin work with, through this grant program, and it's very much related. And the work to write this grant came out of the Traffic Advisory Committee, so it's a good--
Good fit.
Well, it's, yeah, also a good idea to wait on the article until we're really up and running, doing the work that is tied to this grant. So, postpone Article 31.
Yep, exactly. And, you know, there are so many things in play at the moment. We don't know if this money is actually going to appear. The same with the MVP program. We just have no idea what's going to happen with these things, given the state of the economy, declining revenues. All these things could be reprogrammed.
Yeah, we never know.
And the last thing you want to be, you don't want to be on the hook for the money.
Right, right. Good idea to wait till October. Okay, we have a donation from the Holliston Grill for first responders, and we need a motion to accept the donation in full for active first responders to help them from the Holliston Grill. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept the donation from the Holliston Grill for our first responders.
Do we have a second?
Second with a comment.
Yes, sir.
I understand that the matter involving the ethical potential conflict has been vetted and has been cleared for acceptance. So, just for people to understand that this is not necessarily meant to be a conflict of interest it was looked at, so second.
Very good. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We have a name change. Good Chemistry has changed their name from Good Chemistry Nurseries to Good Chemistry of Massachusetts Incorporated. And we need a motion to accept that name change.
Move to accept the name change of Good Chemistry of Massachusetts for the host community agreement signed by the town of Holliston.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. We have meeting minutes of March 11th, 2020, and March 13th, 2020. We need a motion to approve.
Move to accept the meeting minutes of March 11th, 2020, and March 13th, 2020.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We have an MVP and RFP award. We need a motion to award a contract to Kim Lundgren Associates Incorporated for the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, FY2021, planning, grant, administration, and implementation.
So, Mark, if I could jump in with a comment on this RFP, and request that the board consider pausing on accepting an RFP proposal, and consider a couple of different options. One would be asking for an extension, or a hold on our approved action grant, the one that was approved for fiscal year 20 into 21, or reapply, basically turn it down and reapply in the fall of 2020. And the concern that brings either of these up as a suggestion that I'm making is there are very specific deliverables for fiscal year 20 in order to meet the requirements of this grant. And I think with bandwidth of the staff who are involved in the execution of this grant, that's an issue. Chris Mayo is the director for this grant, project director.
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
He's a busy man. And so his ability to attend to the deliverables for this grant are limited, I would say, given his other responsibilities. And so out of a need to sort of be mindful of that, and a need to do the right thing based on what this grant is intended to do, it's concerning to me that we may not be able to do really a good job with FY20 deliverables.
Should we get some feedback from Chris Mayo before taking a vote on this, and finding out what his thoughts are?
Of course.
And maybe table this till next meeting?
You could, you could table that, certainly. I think it's a lot to do with, you know, what's on the plate. And there are so many moving targets, again, back to the state, and the funding. I'm concerned about whether or not they can actually deliver on the funding.
Right.
That would be my concern. And of course, the transition in my position, I think that you want to have somebody who is on board on the front end.
You said FY20, so if we accepted the grant, we have to expend it by June 30th? Is that correct?
Yeah.
There's no extensions available?
We can ask for extensions, so I think that's something we should discuss. That's a possibility, that we could request an extension. We've asked for one already, and Chris received the information back from.
You seem to have a good reason to do that. And furthermore, Tina, why wouldn't we turn the management of the grant, given Chris's plate, over to Matt Zedek? Why isn't Matt running the MVP grant at this point?
I don't know.
Can he, as a contractor?
Mm-hmm.
So that's another, maybe we bring Matt in to discuss this?
Yeah, let's discuss this the next meeting.
And options.
Talk about our options. If we could have Chris and Matt come in?
We knew all along, from when this grant was going to be awarded, from conversations with Kim late summer into the fall, that the timeline was going to be tough. And even the delay in getting the RFP out has been concerning for that timeline, regardless now of what's going on with the state of emergency. But, yeah, we certainly can ask for an extension. I think that's a reasonable choice.
We're extending to a meeting, you know? We've got a transition leadership.
It seems like we need a conversation, you know? So this would be good to do that.
Yeah, not a problem, next week.
All right. So we will not vote on that tonight.
And, excuse you, you'll talk to Chris about, get some feedback from Chris, on his role within the MVP grant, and concerns he may have?
Sure, yep.
All right, we have a Governance Committee Appointment. Sam Tyler has volunteered to serve on this committee. It's recommended to be a three-year appointment. Any comments, discussion?
No. Move to accept Sam Tyler's application to serve on the committee, or request to serve on the Governance Committee Appointment for a term of three years.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have an appointment for Town Administrator Screening Committee. Mary Greendale and Jay Leary have volunteered so far. We would need to appoint them as well. Any discussion?
How many people did we say? I know that.
Five.
Five total? That was what we decided for sure?
Yep. Both of them are very good candidates, very versed, past select board members, and...
I think, I think one of the things that we talked about, Mark, when we formed the committee, was that we were going to fill in some areas of topical relevance that each member of the committee showed and ought to cover. And we didn't do that yet, you know, in terms of what kind of profile each.
We did, yeah, we did.
Because we want some, you know, across the spectrum kind of representation, I think. I mean, with only two people kind of stepping forward to this point, I would put the word out again, we need people to step up here. I know it's a difficult time. But the work of Paradigm, I think, is going to be looking to speak or create this kind of screening committee. What was it, sometime in late April, was it?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd give you, I'll give you my five areas of interest that I think the candidates that are applying should touch on. First, there should always be an at-large member, somebody who just doesn't fit one of the boxes, that is, you know, an adequate representative of our town needs. I think somebody has to have a business or financial background, somebody who can understand the demands of an executive-level position. Somebody who either has senior management or public management experience. So in other words, somebody who's not necessarily in the financial world, but has public management experience. Mary Greendale, for example, I know she's been a public manager. Somebody with an HR background, who has an understanding of working with personnel, an understanding of, you know, modern workplace policies, procedures, and so forth. And then finally, somebody with a leadership experience. People who have demonstrated in their career the ability to lead people and achieve goals and so forth. So those are the things that kind of came to mind as areas that folks who are looking to join the committee could appeal towards, so that we can have some.
I've always liked an at-large member, because then that could be any resident, and they may be thinking out of the box, which can be very helpful.
Big time, yeah. It's very true.
And I agree with you, this position involves someone that needs to have a business-financial background, as well as a public management background, and HR experience, and certainly a leadership, so. I think, I think that sounds like a good. Anything you want to add or change to that?
No, if we're going to continue to have pandemics, I'd say healthcare experience, but that's not something we're going to think about. Jeff, you've received just these two?
Yes.
Mary Greendale and Jay Leary? No one else has stepped forward to show interest this time?
No.
So we definitely need.
What I like about these two is, one of them has definitely the business-financial side, Mr. Leary being on the Finance Committee, as well as the Select Board. And Mary Greendale has the public management, a really great resume for that. So I think the two of them would take care of two of the slots. And then we should put out on the website, Jeff, that we're looking for three more, one to be at-large, one with HR background, and one with leadership background. And then that should help attract, draw what we need.
Mark, so the work of this committee does not begin until April, mid to late April?
I think that was it, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Once the resumes are received.
Okay. So it's wonderful, we've got these two qualified individuals stepping forward, no doubt about it. Is it worth waiting to have a full complement of interested individuals, so that we're choosing five from that full complement? Where there's no time rush, we were not thinking that this particular committee, like the Governance Committee, was going to need to prepare anything for town meeting. There's no, we don't think the work of this committee is going to start for another couple of weeks. That does give us some time.
Yeah, but I think that, you know, when somebody requests to help from the community, and if we've got the right slot for them, we should welcome them with open arms.
Okay.
I actually kind of agree with Tina.
The only reason why I think that is because you're not hiring a paid position here, you're asking volunteers.
Understood. I'll tell you why I agree with Tina, Mark. I think there's some benefit to waiting. In the event we don't get five people to step forward, what are you going to do? We might have to revisit the screening committee's makeup, and may have to trim maybe down to three, something like that, to fit what might be on our plate. So this is kind of a fluid thing. I think both of these individuals are very experienced in town government, they know how things work. I think if we waited a week or two, it's not the end of the world, it gives this committee a chance to receive more applicants. I'm not trying to box either one of them out.
No.
That's not the point here, it's just to maybe make a more fulfilled, knowledgeable decision when we have to. We have time to wait, so.
We usually, when people volunteer, we usually take them right away, and then as we get more, we take them on. So this is, this is changing what we normally do.
Actually, the last time I think you folks had a screening committee, they waited until all the resumes came in, and then your board went through them in one night.
But that was for a paid position. This is for a volunteer committee.
No, it wasn't.
That, we.
It was for the police chief, the one that seated Matt Stone. That was a screening committee.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was before I was here.
Okay. And then the prior one, which was five years ago, that brought Jeff to us, I was on that one, and same path. You assemble all the resumes at once, and then the board goes through them and selects usually the ones they want.
So I was talking about the last few times that we've done it. We, I wasn't on the board when we did Matt Stone's screening committee, but.
I understand what you're saying.
That was for a position for a police chief. This is, this is for a committee for a town administrator. So, you know.
Mark, if I could, I understand what you're saying. I mean, we never want to turn away from someone who's stepping forward to volunteer, and it's wonderful to have these two individuals step forward to volunteer. I think this is about process. And I also think this is about where people's attention has been over the past two weeks, and perhaps they have not been listening or aware of the fact that this screening committee is in existence, and so to be true to the process moving forward, I'm comfortable that, number one, Mary Greendale and Jay Leary would absolutely understand that there's a process at play, and would have no problem waiting it out a week or two to get the full list of applicants in hand. I don't think it waters down at all what they have to offer to the committee, I think it just keeps the process integrity in place. That's really where I'm coming from, and only where I'm coming from.
I mean, my experience is that we never get five all together, that we accept them as they come in. But if the two of you feel very strongly, then we'll do that.
I don't think it's any harm in it, Mark.
I'm fine.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Got it. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before you move on, could we revisit the town meeting warrant discussion for an item I'd like to.
Absolutely.
Get your buy-in on, please. Earlier today, Mr. Ritter forwarded you and Ms. Hine a copy of the StanTech proposal for studies associated with the Department of Public Works. I'm not sure if you had a chance to read this yet, but it's similar to what we've seen in the past, with some revisions I wanted to draw your attention to.
Sure.
So StanTech is a firm that works with our Department of Public Works. They, I met with Eric Allatz, I think it was back in February, and laid out the concerns that were echoed by members of the Finance Committee and town meeting last fall, about the three articles that we had put forth. Recall at the time, there was a lot of discussion about a couple of the articles, their relevance to other grants, programs. This proposal seeks to do a couple of things. Number one, it's revisiting the three original Public Works articles, sidewalks, water pipe replacement acceleration plan, DPW facility, and it adds a fourth one. It came to our attention that there was a strong interest, and Mr. Reese concurred that the town has had over 10 years now since it has sourced any new well-water geotechnical or geoengineering plans for our next well to be developed. It takes quite a long time to get to that point. So this plan now includes a fourth study to explore our well-water opportunities over the next several years. Begins the process. More importantly, it does give the board, our board, some flexibility. A couple of months ago, we went through an exercise with the Finance Committee and the School Committee. We talked a lot about visioning, and the ability to look ahead at our town's priorities, and one of the things that we determined was, we can't have it all. You can't have brand-new schools and all this infrastructure done, and throw overrides on the ballot and expect the taxpayers to foot the bill. It just wasn't sustainable. So what I asked the StanTech folks to do is to give us not just a 20-year plan, which is originally the fall town meeting view, now I'm asking to give us two views, a 10-year and a 20-year. So if we have to look at half a loaf, what can we get done in 10 years, presumably before and if we achieve a high school plan? You know, Dr. Jackson's mentioned that our thinking is that by the time we actually see any debt associated with a new high school, it could be many years from now, I think he said four to seven, if I'm not mistaken. We could possibly use these plans to vote in improvements that are short-termed, or well within the timeframe, before and if we take on school debt. Pulsing that vision, being able to say to the community, we've done what we can do with our resources. This plan will give us the flexibility to understand both sides of that coin.
Right.
In addition, I'll call your attention, I believe, Tina, this is something that you should be familiar with. Under the sidewalk plan, the plan will take into account, we will review and develop recommendations for leveraging this study to secure capital funding through available grant programs, such as complete streets and safe routes to schools. This was something that came up last fall. We want them to understand and be familiar with those programs, as they make their study recommendation to us about where the sidewalk plan can be implemented. I've asked the folks at StanTech to give us an idea of how long the studies will take. I'm here to report that the water pipe replacement study will take six to nine months, at a cost of $40,000. The water supply planning, which is the well-water plan, Mark, would be three to six months, it's $15,000. The sidewalk prioritization plan would take six to nine months, at a cost of $40,000. These are all estimates, because it'll be bid eventually.
Right.
And the DPW feasibility study will take six to nine months, at $50,000. I want to emphasize, the DPW feasibility study will include photographs and an assessment of existing conditions at both Arch Street and Central Street. And there was one other thing I was going to mention. The, I'm drawing a blank here. Give me one second.
Water well?
No, it was on the water pipe replacement plan. Oh, right. So one of the other comments from the Finance Committee last fall was that we did a 2010 water asset management plan. And this was something that was sort of like one of those, you know, who's right, who's wrong. It was, the Finance Committee has a clear recollection that the town paid a lot of money to have a water asset management plan developed. Where are the pipes in our ground, and so forth. That plan was completed, so we have an inventory of pipes in the ground. What we don't have, and what this plan will give us, is how that plan will unfold year to year to year. Earlier this evening, Mr. Ritter informed us at Cedar Streets, next up, there's going to be a large project that starts in April. That's great. Mr. Reese cannot tell us today what street will be in play in two, three, four, five, seven years from now. It is an unfolding, you know, catch-as-catch-can plan. And this plan will help source the 2010 asset management plan, the condition of the pipes that are in the ground, their age, as well as recording, as you've often pointed out, Mark, what is their repair history? Are certain infrastructure areas under chronic need for replacement? Should they be completely replaced by this plan? So with your approval tonight, I'd like to take the plan, get it over to the Finance Committee, have them chew on it, and really get some good dialogue going with them, so that we can all agree, not only is this, these studies required for the future of Holliston, but they're scalable. We can, we can move the plan 10, 20 years within our needs, financial and otherwise, so with your approval.
And this was exactly what the Finance Committee asked for last fall.
It meets a lot of their concerns. You recall, I'm sorry.
They were looking for a lot more information, and this was what they did.
Right. You recall when Dr. Jackson came in, and we talked about the high school statement of interest, that he, we all heard a member of the Finance Committee say, we can't approve of these studies as long as we have an SOIO for the high school, because that's such a large capital commitment. We've had some conversations, both on camera and off, about the remark and its place, and what I think was, the intent was, there are certain capital studies that need to get done, and then there's long-term planning.
Right.
And there ought not to be any confusion in between. My hope is that this clears up a lot of confusion, it shows a very clear plan for what we need done in this town. These are studies. Hopefully, within a year, we're looking at. are studies. Hopefully, within a year, we're looking at picking some of these projects and beginning to...
And with an improved economy.
Right, well, you know, I, I don't think I'm putting words in the mouth of the chairman of the finance committee, but he's been known to say quite frequently, "You want to bond projects in a bad market." So, "When money's cheap," I think Ken's fond of saying, so, what better time? So anyways, that's my pitch I wanted to offer to you and Ms. Heine this evening.
No, I think it's a very organized way, and, and I'm glad you took on that project earlier this winter to gather all this information, and I'm sure it took you a long time, and you've been working hard with Sean Reese and others to do it, so we can't thank you enough. And it's an organized approach of information that the finance committee has asked for, and so we're giving them the answer that they've asked for, and, and I would hope that it would put us on a trajectory of moving in the right direction for, for water infrastructure improvements for our town, because it's, it's one of the most important things we can do as a board of selectors, to make sure that we're moving in that right direction. So I'm all for it, and Tina?
Well, I was doing some mental math, John, while you were wrapping up there, and the, the timing is, is great when you think about, so the, the vision of strategic planning conversations that were happening a month or two ago, those obviously have been put on hold, given what we're dealing with today, but they're not gone.
No.
The need for long-term planning is very much critical for, for where we're heading as a town, and so six to nine months on all of these plans put us sort of in that October, November, December, late 2020, early 2021 timeframe, which gives plenty of time for the FinCom, for the school committee, for this board, to come back together and consider strategic planning. And now you have good information, now you have what you need to be able to make the smart decisions as we go into the budget season for fiscal year '22. So the timing is, is great.
It's perfect.
The six-to-nine-month timeframe is great, and I don't think that we should abandon any steps that we want to take as a board towards long-term planning. I know that it's rocky, and it's going to get rockier over the coming weeks, and we're going to really feel like we should be questioning every, every decision that we make. The news is going to probably get scarier and more alarming, but I think as a board, it's our job to keep a focus on the long term, as well as adapt to the short term. So I am fully in support of this, and think it's great.
Excellent. We'll take a motion.
Do you want to make the motion, Tina, to adopt the StanTech report dated March 26?
Move to adopt the StanTech proposal dated March 26, 2020, for the formation of articles to be presented in the town meeting, the May, well, no, June, town meeting warrant.
Do we have a second?
Second, and that would include the four articles.
Four, correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Terrific.
Sorry, I should have brought that up 10 minutes ago.
That's quite all right. It was on the agenda, so it was allowed. All right, and any other business, Tina?
I just had an update from Nine Green Street. I've been in communication with Kevin Connolly over the past week or two.
Oh, good. And how is Kevin?
He's very good.
He's back from vacation?
Uh, he may be. With remote participation, one never knows where the other is, but he is a very happy grandfather, I believe.
Oh, I've seen some pictures on Facebook to that effect.
So we're seeing, as a committee, we're seeing some delays. We're seeing delays from Mass DEP on a key submission that's necessary for us to move forward in addressing compliance with DEP. And given the events of the last few weeks, we've not been able to meet. Scott Moles is one of our committee members, and has a very important voice
Yes.
in reviewing the LSP reports, and working with DEP issues and so on, and obviously, he has not been readily available for us. So given those two things in particular, we have the LSP report, we need to review it as a committee. So I was going to say that we will not have an article ready for April 13th, but the earlier decision of the evening makes it more of a, of a likelihood.
Yeah.
Jeff, if it's okay with you, I have already proposed to Kevin that we try to get a meeting remotely scheduled by, in sometime in mid-April, which should us, have us...
For as long as there's less than 10 of you.
I think we have a comment.
Hello? Yes?
The dreaded mute button.
Hello?
Yeah, hello.
I, I'm gonna, I'll wait till you finish with your business, okay?
Oh, okay. Did you have a comment about what we were talking about, or?
I have a comment on, on a couple of things, but I just wanted to figure out beforehand what I was doing with getting in.
Sure.
Can she wait, or?
Yeah, well, we'll be right with you.
Hang in there.
Take your time.
Okay. So Jeff, can we get a deadline? When do you want, so if we've got a June 15th town meeting, is June 1st the time by which you'd like to have a final say on articles? I just want to be able to go back to the...
No, no, mid to early May.
Okay, all right. That's it, thank you.
Any other business, John?
No, sir.
No, okay. All right, now, if we can have your name, madam, and your address, please.
Yes, hi, this is Joan Levinson.
Joan Levinson.
Yeah, Joan Levinson, 66 Jarbrick Road.
Sure, how are you?
I'm fine. I want to, I have a couple of things. I first want to thank everybody on the select board for all of what they are doing in this time of crisis, and all the other business also. I just, I'm nervous that you guys are, I know you're distancing properly, but I wish you would like the finance committee and did it over Zoom, but...
Yeah, they have seven members, so it's hard for them to be around the table together.
Yes.
Luckily, we just have three.
Right. And I want to thank, you know, Chief Cassidy also, for all of his hard work managing this crisis, and also Representative Carolyn Dykema, for all of her work that she's doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for everything. So I want to proceed on now about the sustainability coordinator. I have been in contact with Matt, he's been very responsive to me. We've been discussing some stuff that he's been doing. I'll be looking forward to his update next week, if, if that is arranged. He will be coming to, hopefully joining in on one of our 3:50 meetings next Monday. So, which brings me to wanting to thank you so much for the two-tier aggregation proposal that you have with Colonial Power. The two-tier, both being green, is outstanding, and I hope that you'll be making progress, Jeff, on that, towards getting that approved. It's an excellent plan, thank you. Thank you to, to everybody involved in that aggregation planning.
And we hope that it continues to move forward.
Yes, that would be wonderful, you know. I know we're so involved in this, you know, horrendous crisis we're in, and yet, you know, you seem to be staying focused on some things, you know, obviously you'll have to. I want to thank John for his, John, for your constant, last, last week during the town meeting, during, I'm sorry, last week during the select board meeting, and again, today, you mentioned about being sure that the money being gotten out of the add-on for the sustainability coordinator's position is, is arranged properly, so that, you know, we, we as a town get that, and I really appreciate, you know, being on top of that.
Thank you, appreciate the kind words.
That's wonderful.
John, John doesn't miss anything, he's right on it.
Oh, yeah.
Right, absolutely. And the last, the last thing is about the MVP, the update that we just received. I would like to, to compliment again the idea of maybe looking into Matt being the manager, and if that could maybe prevent it from having to, us cancel it completely, and then, you know, go for it again, that could be an excellent solution, because I would like to see somehow it figured out, yes, if Chris's plate is too full, and you're thinking of it, you know, either extending it or canceling it, maybe, maybe Matt could look into taking on some of that. So I really appreciate that idea, and, you know, see about moving forward with that, rather than having that go by the ways it's right now.
It would be a shame, it would be a shame to take a step backwards.
It would be, it really would be. And my last comment is about, I just want to voice about the idea that the new town administrator, as a hiring committee, is thinking about all the different things that they want in the new town administrator, that this person is, is also very aware of the town's commitment to sustainability, and how much process, progress we have made on it, and that he would continue, or she would continue with the goals of the town as a new administrator to this town.
Are you, are you saying you want to be on the committee?
I'm saying, if it's a Zoom committee, I, I would. I would think of it, if it's going to be through Zoom. I'm not comfortable leaving my house at all.
Okay. Well, if you, if you want to send in a note that you're interested, or an email to Mr. Ritter, we might be able to get you on the committee. We, we're gonna look at it all, we'll get a few more games.
Joan?
Thank you.
Joan, this is Tina Heine. I just wanted to say, too, that you have the opportu, any resident has the opportunity to provide feedback. I believe that the paradigm link is open on the town website, where community input is, you can provide it there. So I have not looked to find it myself, I'll, I'll take Jeff's...
Yeah, that's true.
...confirmation that it's up there, but my understanding is, last week, it was given to our IT director, and it was placed on the town website. If you cannot find it, just shoot me an email, but any resident should be able to provide input to the search company paradigm that we've hired, so that's another avenue, but we would still prefer you to consider joining the, the town administrative search committee.
Oh, that's, thank you, Tina, for letting me know about looking for that link. I will do that. I am interested in being on the search committee, if it, if it is going to be on Zoom, but we don't even know at that point where we'll all be in this crisis either. But, so, I don't know. I, I, I'll think about it and see, for sure.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Joan.
Well, thank you so much for hearing me out on all these different issues, and again, my hat goes off to you guys. Thank you again for all of the hard work that you're doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You take care and stay well, everybody.
All right, you take care.
Thanks, Joan.
Bye-bye now.
Bye-bye. All right, if there's no other business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Did you say you had a second caller?
Is there anyone else who, no, okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Oh, motion passes, thank you. It is 8:25. Thank you all for joining us, and have a wonderful evening, and stay safe, and follow all the emergency directors' advice, please. Thank you, bye-bye.